...portion of the candidate forum. And just a reminder, with the microphones, when the red light is on, that means your microphone is on, otherwise it is off. And thank you again to everyone for attending, for all the city council members. We appreciate you being here and for all the audience members as well for coming out and for staying. A quick reminder again, I'm Richard, I'm the community organizer at ASER, what stands for African Career Education and Resources, Inc.
And I'm Antonette, I'm the civic engagement and advocacy manager from Ayata Leads. And yeah, we're partnering together to have this forum today for all of you.
A quick summary of the guidelines for the event. You have two minutes to make an opening statement, one minute to make a closing statement, and one minute to react to each question. And we will give the order of how people will be responding. When you have a half-minute left on your speaking time, the timer will send you a signal showing the 30 seconds mark and informing you that you have 30 seconds to complete your answer. Please end your question and your response when you see the stop card.
Please switch off your phones now and watches as well. We ask that all the candidates be fair to each other and that all the participants be fair as well. Please be silent during the discussion, there'll be no applauding, cheering, or shouting, except that you may clap for all candidates after their closing comments if you desire. You're also invited to submit questions on the white index card for the candidates. Questions must be directed to all candidates and pertain to concerns or qualifications for their respective offices. Raise your hand if you want another index card or your question taken, and a staff member will come to collect them. I'll read as many questions as we can before we run out of time.
All right, well, I guess I'm going first. My name's Tanya Westhafner, I'm a 24-year resident in Brooklyn Park. I've been married for 24 years and I have two kids that we raised here in Brooklyn Park. I've been a long-term volunteer in Brooklyn Park, started off in 2006, and been on multiple task forces and stable neighborhoods groups and things like that, and then I moved into being on some of the city commissions. I was on the Citizen Long Range Improvement Commission, where I was the chair for four years, and then I moved to the planning commission, and I was the chair for that, the vice-chair, and then the chair for that, before I decided to run for the city council. The reason I'm running, I'm running for reelection, I got redistricted into West District, which is no big deal to me, because I don't really care about the district lines, I'm going to serve you, anybody here in Brooklyn Park. But I just want to continue to bring the common sense and thoughtful point of view and conversation that I've done before, and I just want to continue to enhance our little ability here in Brooklyn Park and continue on the goals and priorities that I've had. And I feel like I have the strategy and wherewithal to do that, so, thank you.
Hi, everybody, I am very honored to be here today. My name is Maria. Hello. My name is Maria, Maria Tran. I am here today, I am the candidate of the West District, and I came from Vietnam War. I am a first-generation immigrant who was a single mother, struggled with many things, go into school full-time, work through a job, taking care of my son, dealing with domestic abuse, dealing with discrimination in my son's school. But I make it, I make my two-year degree in Vietnamese, community involved. I was the winner of a pop culture essay in 2004, I was 2005. I got my story published in the school magazine project, the first number of magazines. I have an essay written overnight, and this essay won't judge it for my son as a victim of racial discrimination in El River School, Middle School. And, you know, career, I am motivated writer, because I don't write for money, I write for social injustice, I write for, you know, the human rights. So, I am also interpreter in the community, Vietnamese community, since 2003, since I've been here in the US. I speak many languages, but I do interpret Japanese, English, Vietnamese.
I don't think her, that microphone, I don't think that microphone is working, this one might not be either.
Mine isn't either, so, can you? Not that I know of, but, yeah.
It's not working either, though, so.
Because I work in the healthcare, advocate for, you know, domestic abuse at home in the healthcare facility, in the nursing home, and now I think if, I want to help people in the larger scale, not just the Vietnamese community, I want to help everybody in Brooklyn Park, our neighbors. And I've been going to all the apartment, you know, and I hearing the story, like, I live from apartment to apartment, I was victim of their landlord and tenant abuse twice, and that's why I know how to deal with it. And they still doing to people, and people think, why the city don't help? So I just, you know, I want to help people, landlord, tenant issue. I hate to see the poor getting poorer because being the victim of scammer, and, you know, legal scam, medical scam, all kinds of scam. But, you know what, I help people with legal scam, the people in Vietnamese community, they hire lawyer for.
Thank you, Marianne. Sorry, you ran out of time.
Okay, yeah, so I just wrap up here, I am running just because I want to help people in the larger scale.
Perfect, thank you.
Hello, everyone, my name is Ingrid Alexander, and I am running for city council in the East District. Just a little bit about myself, my husband and I, Rico Alexander, have been living in Brooklyn Park in the East District for 27 years, where we have raised our two children, Alexis Alexander and Rico Alexander II, where they attended public schools here at Evergreen Elementary, and Jackson Middle School, and Champlin Middle School. I've been very involved in the community, starting out with volunteering in their schools as an active volunteer, also as a sports mom. As the children got older, I did volunteer and support in many of the local governments, more local government initiatives by serving as a precinct captain, being very active in our senate district, and, let's see, what else? Most recently, I've also served on the Small Business Center Task Force, where I was strongly supported by council member Terry Parks for the operative proposal that was submitted to the city council. Just, why I'm running for city council is, I'm really looking to bring more proactive leadership to the community. We have a lot of different issues that we've been dealing with for a long time, some of the items that I'd like to see prioritized, improvement in our public safety, not only addressing our, the increase in violent crime, but also safety of our streets and highways. Highway 2, the proposals for the expansion of Highway 252 is a major issue that I'd like to see more leadership, proactive leadership on, would like to support and seek initiatives to rebuild and strengthen our working, our working middle class.
Thank you.
Hi, I'm Latrina Caldwell, I am running for the Central District as councilwoman. I've been a resident of Brooklyn Park for seven years, I also sit on the commission board for almost two years now, for the Parks and Rec Board. I've been running my nonprofit for 14 years across the Twin Cities communities, but I brought my nonprofit to Brooklyn Park about five years ago, serving the BIPOC community, doing Toys for Tots, giving away everything from clothes to food, to gifts to families. I sit on multiple boards, I sit on tugboat board, I sit on MCTC's social work board as a community leader, as a wife, a mom, as a small business owner. I've been about the community for a long time, I will continue to be about the community before and after this election and every other election, because it's in my heart and spirit to do, so.
Good evening, everyone, thank you so much, ASER.
Good evening, everyone, thank you so much, ASER, for putting this forum together, and thank you, Brooklyn Park residents, for coming out. My name is Teshiri Wako, W-A-K-O, running for Brooklyn Park City Council in the Central District. I am a 20-year resident, a family, and I have served the city at different capacities, and currently I am serving the city as vice-chair of Budget Advisory Commission. I have served this, at this capacity, for the last five years, and I am running for city council because this is the time for me to bring the experiences, accumulated experiences in the Budget Advisory Commission to the next level, to the city council, to the decision-making table. In terms of my profession, I am Chief Financial Officer for Neighborhood Development Center for 20 years, worked throughout the city, in the city of St. Paul, city of Minneapolis in partnerships. I worked with Great Midtown Global Market in South Side of Minneapolis. I have, in my volunteer capacities, I have worked in OCSO school districts, I know what it takes to be safe in the schools and keep, you know, all the school districts accountable. I am currently serving as a treasurer for Regions Hospital, I know what it takes to be, you know, to be considerate for mental health, for youth violence, and how to deal with that. And I like the city, I have lived 20 years here, I, the recreation, the quality of life we have in the city is great, but it has been diminished from year to year, and leadership is absent, and that's what I'm bringing to the table, and that's why I'm running for city council, vote Teshiri Wako for Brooklyn Park City Council.
I'm Chris Erickson, I am running for city council in the East District. I grew up in Brooklyn Park, my parents still live in that same house on the far west edge of the city. I took advantage of our parks and some of our youth programs when I was a kid, and benefited from those. I left Brooklyn Park in my young adulthood to move to Chicago, but when it was time to raise my own kids, I came back to Brooklyn Park, because I believe in this community, I have vested interests in it. I wanted to be the place where my parents live out their retirement years, and where my kids feel like they can make a home for their future families as well. Professionally, I have spent 20 years working in both faith-based and higher education settings, all of which were institutions that took community education involvement and social justice very seriously, and so my professional experience has definitely formed me in that way. After moving here, I looked to get involved and joined the Human Rights Commission, which I served on, and was chair for two and a half years. That was a fantastic experience to learn both the good and many areas for improvement in our community. Have learned a lot about different pieces of mistrust between communities who live here and our police and our city government, people who feel like they struggle to get involved and to understand the systems that function in their daily lives. And most recently, housing issues have definitely risen to the surface, but none of those are going to be solved by one council member or seven elected officials, that's going to be a whole community effort involving everyone in this room, our state officials, our federal electives, and so I'm committed to listening, cooperating, and networking to work on those and other issues that present themselves in the future. Thank you.
Hello, my name is Warren Carey, and I'm running for city council for the Central District. I'm a resident of Brooklyn Park for the last 23 years, married to Nadine Carey for 39 years, father of two, grandfather of two, I, my experience, some of my experience, NRP, Implementation Committee in Minneapolis, a former school teacher, former Pilot City Board Member, former United Way Volunteer Program E evaluator, I'll be social worker for Harbor Lights, a social worker for Senior Resources, also known as Volunteers of America, and presently I'm the founder and senior pastor of Tree of Life Church in northeast Minneapolis for the last 30 years. What made me want to run for city council is that I built, over the last 23 years, I built two homes in North Brooklyn Park. I'm a leader, change agent. I chose to run for city council because of my ability, but also because of my frustration of what I was seeing, seeing in my city. But many of the programs and services that are offered, many times does not appeal to this growing ethnic demographic. The perception of our service delivery system, city workers, workers, clerks, frontline staff, vendors hired to serve our community, it really needs to be transformed to attract different people at all levels. I want to make a substantial difference in the lives of all, but especially for those people that live in Brooklyn Park who are barely seen and never heard. Thank you.
Good evening, everybody. My name is Arhen Minh, originally from Kenya, I've been in this country for the last 24 years. I'm married to my wife, Jeria, three kids, my son is 18 years, my daughter 14 years, and my last born daughter six years. I am a executive director of Global Health Services, this is a nonprofit organization which deals with our intervention and immigrant community and people of color here in the North Metro. I've been serving the community for the last 17 years, in that capacity. We inform ourselves, you know, bring sanity, especially the new folks who come from outside the country. I joined this organization because of the frustrations and the concerns that our people were going through. So since then, I've been working outside there, sharing, you know, our challenges with various organizations and stakeholders, and we have made some strides. I'm running for city council for West District because of the problems and challenges that I see in the city of Brooklyn Park, especially in my area, the West District. So, today I'm here to all my contention, because I'm a contributor to SPIL, and my experience in the community, I want to bring it on the table to see whether we can bring some gain in the city of Brooklyn Park.
With the potential blue line that's coming, and some of the changes that the city council made to the planning in some of the areas around the station areas that are already starting to ring and pop up some development, there's definitely, transportation is one of the big things that we need here in Brooklyn Park, so that, you know, I hear the mayor, the mayor candidate speaking of that too, but I think that's, that's definitely something that we need to work on as well, and just work on some of the maintenance issues, I'm going to talk a little bit about that later, but just, you drive along Brooklyn Boulevard or West Broadway where the train's going to run, and we have some areas that need some help, and some need to have more code enforcement work done, that kind of thing, so, I will, I think I'm out of time, so I'm just going to leave it at that. Thanks.
That's right, in my district, you're more about social justice, because we have a lot of apartment around, and most of the people live in apartment, they even not citizen yet, they still green car, but they deserve to be taken care by the local government. They live in apartment, apartment under qualifying. Consider, at this weather, you get inside the apartment at 100 degrees, no air condition, and, you know, cockroaches all over, and all the damage that people don't care to pick for the tenang, you know, hazardous environment. And then, landlord make a false claim to deny, to return the money deposit, and that's happened to me twice before when I was, I know how to deal with it, and it's not difficult, why nobody help people. So now I'm going out on the apartment.
Time is up, thank you.
As I mentioned before, I represent the East District. As far as what's, what do I enjoy the most of the East District, I would say there's actually two things. One is the environment, we have a beautiful part of Brooklyn Park where we have beautiful parks, green space, access to the Mississippi River, so it's just a beautiful representation of our city. The other is just the diversity within the East District. We have a very strong diverse community along the East District. Some of the areas that I would like to see improvement is, one, Highway 252, the, two of the intersections in Highway, along Highway 252 have been notoriously dangerous, and I'd like for, to see more proactive leadership to address that. That doesn't mean making the highway larger, but taking into considerations the, the perspective of the residents that live there.
For me, what I most enjoy about my area for Central is I've been getting out in the community, meeting a lot of people, a lot of my neighbors, just really walking in the heat, sweating, drenched, really trying to get my, letting people hear my voice, so, getting out, and they were welcoming, it was like unity, they were open and helpful, and they were open arms to me, so that felt really good, so, that's what I love about the Central area. And then, as far as what could be changed, I would say, definitely we need help with the safety, we need more youth support. I run a youth mentoring program, we need more support for the youth, things for them to do, so we can have a safer community for them and us, so.
What makes me proud of in the Central District is the diversity of the population, the growing diversity in the city, it makes me proud of, because if you see the soccer fields, if you see, you know, the park and rec, and diversity of people, different, you know, really reflecting the diversity of the city, and people enjoying the park and rec, that makes me really proud of. And if you see Central District as a growing city, economic transactions, that's happening, and those are, that makes me really, the interactions, the growing, you know, the highway and all this that came to the city, it's really great to augment that. And there are a lot of things that needs improvement in the Central District, and I would like to start with, really absent of this accountability of landlords in terms of improving the livable conditions of apartments, and in my door knocking, I have seen, I'm sorry.
Please wrap it up, sir. Thank you.
I was going to say parks, but, I was going to say parks, but Ms. Alexander beat me to it, so, I will say the, just the little, the little business treasures that I find still, even having lived in the East District, well, Central before, but for 10 years now, a couple months ago, a friend said, "You haven't been to Gojat yet?" And, no, I haven't, but I think we've been back 20 times since, so, just, there's all these little treasures that are there, and, so that leads me to my area of improvement is, how do we amplify and expand the word about these little treasures, and how do we make it possible for more people to open, own, and operate businesses like that, that bring joy to their neighbors and prosperity to their families? So, yeah, the same answer for both.
What brings me the most pride, I believe, is just the environment, the housing environment, the quality housing, the walking trails, the bike trails in my neighborhood. One of the things that I, I really, really cherish is the interaction with the neighbors. We moved there because the schools were diverse, and I wanted my children to be able to experience the life and culture of other people, and it's made them better people because we moved to Brooklyn Park. The things that I know that we need improvement in, and it just causes just a lot of pain in my life regarding our property taxes and needing a broader tax base here in Brooklyn Park, my taxes are almost $11,000 a year, and that's getting crazy. When we first built that first home, it was like 6,000, but now this home, of course, we live in, it's a larger home, of course, but, they keep going up, they keep going up, and we lost probably about 15 neighbors.
Please wrap it up, sir.
Because of the tax increase, and so, that's something that needs improvement here.
Thank you. My idea, I can say, is diversity, there is a diverse population there, that's another thing that I'm very proud of, and the road connectivity, the proximity to roads, and communication is very easy to get. Also, services where you can go to your groceries and other shopping centers, we have a variety of stores, very, very close, and proximity and access to parks and recreational centers, that is the best in the West District. But when it comes to crime, I think we are one of the worst, especially by Zen and 63 and Brookdale and Brooklyn Boulevard and Brookdale Drive, that, those places are very dangerous, and really we have a problem with that, and also, another worst, worst thing in the West District is the living conditions in most of the apartments. Thank you.
Thank you, candidates. We'll move on to our next question, which is, to all the candidates, if you are elected to the office you are seeking, will you commit to serve your full term and not seek another office? And we'll start with Maria Tran, and we'll just, once again, go down the line, wrap it around.
Can you repeat the?
Yeah, if you are elected to office, to the office you are seeking, will you commit to serve your full term and not seek another office?
This is a hard question. You know, I'm not so about the future dream, but I do love to serve the community, and, you know, if I have a chance to serve the community better, or, you know, better, bigger, you know, I would take it. And even I, I don't get elected, I still love what I've been doing, because I've been doing this since I was in college, it's not just until now, but I set up just because, you know, I can help people figure the whole city resident, not just the Vietnamese community.
If elected, or, yes, I would serve out the entire term. I'm currently a small business owner, insurance broker, and so I do have the flexibility, and so I do make the commitment to the city of Brooklyn Park, that I'm here to serve the residents, and I would complete the entire term.
Yes, I too, as my peers stated, small business owner, very flexible as well. I've been about the community, I will always continue to be about the community, and yes, I will serve the full term with my whole heart. And yes, I will serve the full term with my whole heart.
Thank you. I have been in the Budget Advisory Commission for last five years. And I am always after what benefit the city of Brooklyn Park. But I don't want to tie my potential to contribute to the city of Brooklyn Park. If any opportunity or calling by the city of Brooklyn Park comes to benefit the city of Brooklyn Park, I'll take it. And there's, I don't want to, you know, commit to you and tomorrow different. And if I, if what I'm doing as a person, as a citizen living in the Brooklyn Park benefits the city of Brooklyn Park, either at the, any level, that's, that's good for the city. That's what I have been doing, even working different places. And I'll consider that. As a first generation business owner, business plan trainer, I believe my expertise will benefit the city.
Yes, I, I'm a person who fulfills my commitments. And this commitment I'm making is to serve four years on the City Council. And I have no intention to do anything other than that.
Yes, if elected, I would definitely serve up my full term and serve the community and be a beacon of light.
Yes, I'll serve the community for a term and even, even, even now, the work we do in the community, actually, you know, it needs some more. So I will serve the community and the full, with the full capacity.
I think I'm last on this one at least. Last but not least, I guess. I take my commitments very seriously and I don't, I don't run for office lightly. And I, and when I'm committed to something, I focus on it. I'm finishing up the four years that I was thankfully lucky enough to be elected to, to serve. So, and I'm not looking and seeking any other types of other space. So yes, absolutely, I would. I make that commitment.
All right. Thank you to all the candidates for their responses. A just reminder too, we will move to wrap up around 8:15. So we'll probably have time for one more question, depending how fast it goes, maybe two. And then wrapping up with conclusions and finishing statements. And then this one, we'll start with Ms. Alexander and then we'll move down the line. If elected, how would you feel working for a mayor who has defied law enforcement? So I think this is how would you respond in a situation like that?
I'm sorry, a mayor who defied law enforcement?
The question would be, the question as written was if elected, how would you feel working for a mayor who has defied law enforcement? Not to say anyone has, I think just theoretically, if you felt someone was defying law enforcement as mayor, what would be your response?
Well, first of all, I think it's kind of unfair to have a hypothetical question like that because there's a lot that goes into what, you know, the accusation. But you know, I think everyone needs to be held accountable. If you're defying law enforcement, regardless if you're the mayor or anyone else on City Council or any other resident, you need to be held accountable. So I, I think it would just need to be looked into and take proper measures.
Yeah. Good question. I would just piggyback on exactly what she said, stated, yes. Holding everyone accountable, all, everyone, and just kind of evaluating the situation before we can just answer a question like that.
First of all, that's very happy to ask a question. I think no one is above the law, I believe in that. And the due process takes its course. And we do, you know, we get elected by the citizens of the city of Brooklyn Park. So to really advocate for consistency, adaptability, I mean, implementation of the rule of law is what I'll advocate for, even if that arises.
I elected officials are elected by the people and there are mechanisms to remove them from office. And unless that were to happen, I'm committed to being one voice of seven on a city council and working with those seven people who've been elected by the people of Brooklyn Park.
Yeah, there was a mayor that defied the police and police officers. That would, that would be definitely, definitely difficult to be able to work with. But I would, of course, execute my charge and hold up my side of the deal and make sure that people are accountable, speak up when it's not happening.
Yeah, I think the process determines the outcome. I will apply the Court of Commandment. Thank you.
Yeah, that's a definite hard one because there's no context in that. And so the hypothetical is a really difficult question. We have to all be held accountable. Like yesterday, I went, went to the police department to grab a report that I needed to look at. And you know, I was like, hey, I'm on the council, whatever. And I wasn't looking for anything, but he's like, well, I can't treat you differently. I'm like, well, I don't want you to. And so I don't, I don't want anybody to think that I wouldn't do that. But it would be, it would just depend, like, did this happen before or after they were in office? You know, those kinds of things. So it, it's a difficult question, but you, as having been up here on the dais, working with other people, you do have to work with other people. And so it really is just much more context in which you'd have to work in to understand what the situation was and when it happened and that kind of stuff. So thanks.
I think when you are the, the public servant, you, you are the mirror for people to look at. So you have to be, you know, and when you do the mistake, you need to take on the responsibility and maybe, you know, it's very seriously. You cannot ask for, you know, for less, maybe for more, to show that you are good leader. And then, you know, so that, because you are the mirror for people to look at. You are public servant, so you cannot, you know, act like you are above the law.
All right, I think we have time for a couple more audience questions. So now we will be asking our candidates. What are your thoughts on how the council has dealt with the issues at Huntington Place? And I believe we are starting here.
Good, thinkable questions. The Huntington Place first, I, I feel like they need a lot of help over there. I used to go over there a lot. I had clients I would go see, help move in, move out, help them with food and travel, things like that. So. Can you repeat the question?
Yes, what are your thoughts on how council has dealt with the issues at Huntington Place?
Well, in my seven years of living in Brooklyn Park, I haven't seen much change in the Huntington from when I was there with my clients. Actually, it's worse there with the safety issues over there. So I really don't have much to say. I don't see any many changes over the last seven years in my perspective.
Give me the question again.
Okay. I think how do I see how the City Council addressed Huntington Place? I do see absence of leadership because this has been persisted for so long. I don't want this happen in the city of Brooklyn Park. And why there is no action? I want the city to move from talking all the time at different City Council into action. Action, incremental action. I'm not expecting the next day something happens or the next month something happens. I'm expecting to see the, the voices of citizens. Why sexual harassment doesn't stop immediately in that place? Why cleaning doesn't happen immediately in that place? There should be action and the city inspection should work as equal that they keep other rental properties accountable. And it should be turned into livable conditions. I'm not expecting more of the first day or the next month. But it should be action, that should be taken.
Having been a part of the Human Rights Commission during our Huntington visit and then presenting those findings to the City Council and to city staff, I was somewhat shocked to see looks of surprise on some faces, as though this was new information to some. Especially after talking to some folks like police officers and firefighters who've told me that they've gone home and cried themselves asleep at night after having an interaction there. So I would really like to examine how some people on our city staff are moved to tears by something. And yet others in our city staff and leadership are surprised by something. Where is the disconnect happening in our city government? And I think that's something we should look at very soon.
Thoughts, thoughts on how the council views or looks at Huntington Place? My wife, we done foster care for like 17 years and we had kids that were from Huntington Place and made many, many visits there and dropping kids off. I believe the motivation is pure, but when it comes down to having a heart for, but also understanding that there's a felt need. I mean, a felt need is about getting over there and empathizing, but turning that empathy into some form of work or some, some type of assistance, you know? And so I think many times, you know, in politics, people can use it as a backdrop for their own personal good. But I'm not saying everybody's done that. But people can kind of say that we've been there and we've done that and, you know, get some bonding points with the community. And it's really not like that. It has to be a felt need that ultimately moves you to do.
Yeah, myself, I was there a week ago and I don't understand how such a apartment passes in inspection. There is a problem maybe from the city that we don't know. Maybe that's why we need to come in and see new people and then we see, look at it because it seems that is what we call implicit biasness in applying the standards. That those apartments should be condemned. And the people should not continue living in those contaminated apartments. I'm telling you because when we went in there, we were set up back and we moved a little bit because you can't, there's no hair that you can inherit there, you see? So I don't know how people live there. And the city, while it give, give on, you know, it passes, you know, the inspection house. There is a problem with the city, management, the way they are applying their standards. It's what we call implicit biasness there. Thank you.
I guess it's my turn and since I'm the only one that's currently sitting on the City Council. I guess one thing to just understand, I'm a houser by trade. That is what I do is the housing. I help developers build housing. I help developers rehab housing. It is very deep in my blood to be a houser. And I don't very likely say what I've said on the council about housing and about, we have such a dire like need for housing that it's, it's very painful for me to say, but I've said it many times, that maybe some of those units or buildings altogether need, some of them need to get taken out. We, I, I feel like as a City Council, we have done what we can do because it is a privately owned business. It is a privately owned apartment. We can go in and we can do inspections, we can do fines, which we've done all of those things. We blast people in public, which is about all that the city can do. We've given $6 million to that project. We plan on probably giving more. So I think there needs to be a little bit of understanding that the council can do some things, but we can't do other things. But I care very, very deeply about housing. Thank you.
I think in Brooklyn Park, not just Huntington, we have many, many other apartment around. And I've been there and I find even the same old works. And that's why, you know, people feel unprotected because nobody care. You know, there's a law, housing law. You cannot rent out, you know, unqualified hazardous, hell environment. But that's why I think action, I agree with Tishire. You know, the city need to do action, apply some law to the people that are doing housing business because they violate some, some kind of housing, housing law.
Okay, so plain and simple, it's unacceptable. The City Council's response to Huntington Place is a perfect example of where we do not see proactive leadership in our community. The, this problem with Huntington Place did not start yesterday, did not start last year. It started many years ago. And the city actually approached a nonprofit organization to come in and assist with the problem. So if you're going to ask somebody to assist you with a problem, then you need to continue to help them solve the problem. You cannot just give $9 million on a $73 million problem and expect the problem to go away. So we need to have more proactive leadership, not just with the building. But if you have people telling you that there are children sleeping in the hallways, what is City Council doing about that? What if, if you're going to have people come out and volunteer to give food to the residents, why aren't you asking people to volunteer and fix some of the issues that are in the problem, in the building? So I think we just need to see more proactive leadership and that's what I plan to bring to City Council.
Thank you, thank you. All right, we are going to wrap it up now. Unfortunately, we've come to the end of this forum. We'll move on to closing statements and we'll stick to one minute. I believe we'll just start right here with Mr. Waco. Go on down, bring it around once again. Thank you.
My name is Tishire Waco. I am the first generation Oromo from Ethiopia. I am Chief Financial Officer for 20 years. I am a business owner. I'm 20-year resident of the city. I'm a volunteer and currently serving as Vice Chair of Budget Advisory Commission. My priorities, the platform on which I'm running is public safety, housing stability, property tax levy, which is relatively high in the city of Brooklyn Park, and economic development. As the team, the mission statement of Brooklyn Park says, opportunity exists for all. Not investor-driven development, but long-term sustainable development that contributes to the revenue mix of the city. That's why I'm running and I ask your vote during primary to vote for Tishire Waco in the city of Brooklyn Park Central District. Thank you so much for the opportunity.
I'm Chris Erickson, again, lifelong resident of Brooklyn Park. I love the city and I will continue to serve it whether I'm elected or not. But I believe that I have a lot to offer the council. I believe that all of our residents should be able to live in housing that matches the pictures on the developer's website. I believe that every one of our residents should expect safe and effective service from our emergency services and from our parks and from our operations and management teams. And I will work together with my fellow council members and I'll work together with all of the community members to make sure that those things happen. And I ask for your vote for the East District City Council seat.
My name is Warren Carey and I just wanted to score a few of the priorities that I have as relates to transportation and help strengthen that which exists. Help strengthen that which exists. We have, we have bus lines, but they need to be expanded on even before the blue line. The blue line is very important because people need transportation. Many times you have to strengthen that which exists for that transportation line to connect internally as well as to other cities. Early childhood, family, youth and mentoring, training, mentoring families, not just mentoring kids. You can't just mentor kids and think the kid is going to change because they're going to go back into the home and, and the family has not evolved. And so that's another priority I have, as well as revisiting the curfew for our kids. I see too many young kids out at 12 o'clock after, you know? And there, there's curfew laws, but they're not being enforced. They're not being enforced. I'm Warren Carey, serving the Central District. Cover your vote.
My name is Andrew Monman. Again, I'm the candidate for Councilmember West District, Brooklyn Park.
Again, I'm the candidate for council member, West District, Brooklyn Park. And I'm running for, my platform is public safety. I support the police court and I put more resources to police so that they can have more, enough money to hire more staff so that they can deal with crime in the city of Brooklyn Park. I will also put some more money in business by modeling small businesses in the city of Brooklyn Park so that they can build some revenue. In that process, we will reduce, you know, taxes, for example, proper tax, like now this time I saw it went up for three hundred dollars. We need to reduce, you know, taxes so that we can attract more businesses in the city of Brooklyn Park. And parks and recreations, I will put more money there because that is one of the areas that I cherish. You know, we need these, you know, parks and the creation centers to be improved so that our people, our children, our, you know, seniors can get a place where they can go and, you know, work or harvest. Thank you.
I just want to say thank you. I'm Tanya West Haffner. I'm running for the West Council District seat. I'm going to spend a little less time talking about myself and a little bit more time talking about the priorities. We had some questions that we got before this meeting and I had them answered. I think one of the huge things that we have to continue to work on is our housing stock. We changed a lot of the programs to help homeownership, to put some things in place for rental, but we have to continue to do that. And I think the hugest piece of that is changing the way that we manage our, our code enforcement. That's unfortunately means potentially we have to hire some more code enforcement or we have to get them to stop doing some of the work that they're doing. And that potentially means an increase in taxes. And the other big thing that I'd love to have people understand is really how that whole process really works and that we're not the only taxing entity in their life and therefore sometimes, I mean, if you look at our budgets, they've been very, very tight and we haven't really increased our portion of that, of that budget very much. And so if you're, it's gone up, it's because the property value went up or somebody else hit you up. So, thanks.
I am Maria Tran and as you know, my, my goals, I prioritize my three goals. My first goal is, you know, the public safety in the city is because the community gaps. So I want to use the fund to the city to improve my plan, put the fund to, you know, support family program, youth program, reading, education, more youth about, you know, to accept other cultures, to bridge in the gap between community. And when, and we do more like community neighbor, neighbor meeting each other, no more stranger in the city than, you know, the, and then one more thing is public and law enforcement relationships. We need to work to be on that.
My name is Ingrid Alexander. I'm the DFL endorse candidate for the East District City Council seat. I'm looking to bring proactive leadership that will uplift and unite Brooklyn Park. I would like to be able to prioritize and improve public safety and for both, that will address both the increase in crime and also the safety of our streets and highways. I want us to be able to support and seek initiatives to rebuild and strengthen the working and middle class. I want to be able to embrace and engage the cultural and intergenerational diversity in our community, drive public policy that protects the rights of Brooklyn Park residents, and then finally prioritize policies that protect our environment. So I ask that you vote for me in November for the Brooklyn Park City Council seat in the East District.
I love that we say best for last. Caldwell for change. I am Katrina Caldwell, elect me, councilwoman for the Central District. I'm all about the community, as I stated from the beginning. I've been about the community, I will continue to be about the community. First and foremost, the youth, they are the future. We need to show them that they can sit in seats like this and be able to make decisions and be good to our community here at Brooklyn Park. So the youth for first and foremost. And the crime and safety, of course, is worldwide, seeing how we can come together and make change. I'm all about listening to you guys, hearing your voice. I want to sit at the table and understand what you have to say and be the voice for you, for a change. Caldwell for change. So, thank you.
All right. A big thank you to all the candidates who came for city council and for mayor, also to everyone who attended and listened today, for all the members of Acer and I had a leads who helped set up this event, and for all of us for being here and having these, this exchange of ideas. So a hand to everyone who came today.